Okay, good evening. I'm going to bring the September 16th meeting of the Morro Bay Planning Commission to order. And I would like to first just say that we do have a quorum of four. We have Joe and Graffia, myself, Eric Meyer, Tony Defazio, and Mary Wacowski all present. One of our planning commissioners spaces is currently open and we will be receiving applications on that presently, I think. I'd like to start off with the pledge of allegiance. Is there any planning commissioner announcements?
I have an update for the waterfront master plan committee. Should I provide that now or late?
Now's fine, that now's the appropriate time.
Great, I'm the planning commission representative for the waterfront master plan update committee and I'd like to share an update on some of the things that have been happening. The, there is a website for the waterfront master plan update that is linked to from the Morro Bay City website. It also has the final public engagement plan posted, including in the, included in the public engagement plan is showing the community and government and other representative groups. I think it's a great, a great group that represents the community. I'm particularly happy that Morro Bay High School is involved with both students as part of the committee, community group, as well as part of a government agency. In one of our recent meetings, we did a tour of the waterfront that I attended. During the tour, we heard from select groups such as Embarcadero master leaseholders and heard some disappointment from folks that we didn't get to see Morro Bay from the water as part of that tour. One of the next milestones I think is particularly important to the public is that public workshop number one is planned for November. It will be held in the evening and the goal is for it to be an introduction to introduce the purpose and initial findings and analysis of data collection from the economic and transportation consultants. Next, they'll have a January workshop, which is when they will start to seek inputs from the community. Another thing that was discussed were updates to the Coleman Park concept plan, which has an approved contract with RRM to prepare design and construction plans for Coleman Park. They're taking a phased approach in order to meet the goal of having a new restroom ahead of Memorial Day next year, while also leaving space for Coleman Park to be impacted as part of the larger vision with the WOMPAC and Planning Commission involvement. One thing I thought was particularly interesting that came up as part of the WOMPAC meeting was a discussion of the harbor department patrolling the back bay and that being outside of the city limits, which I hope to hear continued discussion on as an interesting opportunity for funding. Some of the cross-cutting themes that came up as raised by the initial data collection from the consultants were parking challenges and balancing competing priorities between benefiting tourism versus residential quality of life. In addition, I've held several private meetings with members of the community about what they'd like to see in the waterfront master plan update. And I hear broad consensus that folks think it's really important that we bring concrete answers to a lot of the open questions that we have, so that we have a document that provides a very clear roadmap and guidance to elected officials and members of the city staff.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, then now's the time for public comment for items that are not on tonight's agenda. Is there anybody here that wishes to speak to that? And we have a new mic system. These mics are very directional, so you need to get like one hand's length away from the, and it'll, it'll turn green when they can hear you there, but you need right in front of it.
What, this will turn green?
There's a little light at the base of the mic.
Oh, I see it, yeah. That's very good. Yes, I'm here representing the BAC for the county, the Bike Way Advisory Committee.
And you are?
Josh Ulacheck, Bruce Gibson's Point A District Two. I understand that the Bike Way connector between North Morro Bay and the area where I guess the old Chevron property was, Dog Park now, it is in play. Almost all the funding has been awarded. I'm here to support it. It's been in the works since 1992, so we finally got the funding for you. Here if you have any questions, and I support the plan.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Jeff Echols. I'm a member of the Morro Bay City Council. It's been a while since we've convened, so the first thing I want to do is thank each of you for your service to the city on the planning commission. We appreciate you. And then secondly, to let you know and let the public know that the application period for our vacant seat on the planning commission has been closed. It closed a couple of days ago, and a week from today, actually, next Tuesday, the 23rd, the city council will have a special meeting before the regular city council meeting, do the interviews for the planning commission seat, and select, hopefully at that time, then select a new planning commissioner to fill that vacant seat. So again, thank you for all you do for the city. We appreciate you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Being done, I'll close public comment and move on to our first present, is basically the consent agenda, which is the approval of some minutes from June 17th, 25. Do we have any comments about those minutes or changes? Do we have a motion to approve?
I'll move over here, approve them.
I'll second.
Everybody's in favor? Yep, okay, so there you go. That settles that, and that takes us direct to our public hearing items. Case number, the first case is number seven A, a major revision to MAJ 25-001 to conditional use permit, CUP 24-04, which is 431, 451, 471, and 495 in Embarcadero Road.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. I'm Mary Lynn Singwald, your Community Development Director. It has been a while since our last meeting. It's good to see you all here this evening. So I will be giving the staff presentation on this item. Not seeing my presentation on the screen, oh, here it is. Great. So the item before you this evening is a request for a major revision to the previously approved conditional use permit for the Bayside Landing redevelopment project on the southern end of the commercial district of the Embarcadero. Here's a vicinity map, so you can see the project site consists of city lease sites 49 through 52. The applicant, Paul Gillan, is currently the master leaseholder of lease site 52. That's 495 Embarcadero Road, which contains the Associated Pacific Contractors Office Building. Project site is located between Mariner Park and Tylands Park. It is zoned waterfront, and it is subject to the waterfront master plan. So the project is a revision to the previously approved Bayside Landing redevelopment project. And I have an exhibit here of that previously approved project. This was approved by the city council on appeal. It was a revised version of the project that planning commission had previously reviewed. It consists of a total of seven hotel rooms, with five hotel rooms on the first floor and two hotel rooms on the second floor. It also, again, would propose a reuse to the existing office buildings, a 3,000 square foot office building. The first floor would be developed and reused as a kitchen and retail space, as well as public restroom stalls, and the second floor would be a 1,500 square foot restaurant. And it's a little difficult to see on this graphic, but the approved project also includes a second-story public observation viewing deck, as well as a harbor walk connection, which I think is a particularly, a great feature of this project, is connecting the harbor walk all the way from the current dock at Mariner Park through to Tylands Park, and then proposing another observation deck on the southern end by Tylands Park, as well as a new pocket park. The approved project also includes a about 450 square foot retail space that we've been referring to as Reggie's Place. It would be essentially a recreation of one of the existing short-term rental units that planning commission previously believed had a lot of architectural interest, even though it didn't meet the definition of a historic resource, so that was an effort to preserve that building and provide additional activity on the southern end of the Embarcadero with a retail space. The approved project also proposes boat slips and a public floating dock, as well as a kayak rental area. Here's just an elevation of the previously approved project from Embarcadero Road, and you can see the Reggie's Place noting match existing shingles of the short-term rental building with that unique architectural character. You see the elevator shaft in the middle, and then all the way on the right, the, call APC building. One of the points planning commission brought up previously on this project is the stairs providing access from the sidewalk on Embarcadero, which the second story of the office building provides a lot of the architectural character to that building and to preserve, preserve those stairs, which is as approved and proposed with the major revision. And this slide here shows a good view of that second-story observation deck. So this project has a pretty long history, has been in the works really for over two years now. I just want to go over the timeline to kind of bring you up to speed, especially Commissioners who were not on the commission last year, when the project was previously before the planning commission. So it started when the applicant responded to a city request for proposals to redevelop these city lease sites. The Community Development Department brought it to planning commission for a conceptual review in June of last year. There were three planning commission hearings, which eventually led to a denial of the CUP in December of 2024. The denial was largely based on concerns of the height of the building and the massing of the structure, and how that could impact public, public views, and then concerns that the public benefit offered by the project didn't outweigh that, that impact. The city council did reverse that denial and approve the project on appeal in January. And the applicant then submitted to coastal commission to obtain the coastal development permit, which is the next entitlement required before you can apply for a construction permit and initiate development. During that process, after applying to coastal commission for the coastal development permit, the applicant determined that he needed to change the, the plan, and that resulted in the major revision that's before the commission this evening. And we're here at the September planning commission hearing to review that major revision request by the applicant. So now I'm going to focus in on just the major revision, which is the purview of the planning commission this evening. So it is to modify the approved four plans and reuse of the existing 3,000 square foot office building. The, the primary focus of the change is the second floor, so replacing that previously approved 1,500 square foot restaurant use with three new hotel rooms and another entry hallway room leading to the hotels. As far as the first floor, there are some minor changes. The first floor would retain the retail space that the applicant is now staying would be used as a tapas bar, so there would still be a restaurant-type use within the project, not only the tapas bar, but of course also in the Reggie's Place. There is a change to the number of public restroom stalls, so applicant is currently proposing two with this revision instead of the three that were approved. The applicant stated that's due to changes in the kind of occupancy load with the, the change in use reduces the requirement for, for public restrooms. So these changes do result in some other modifications to the, the layout. It would include modifying the viewing deck and removing the rear stairs on the backside of the APC office building. Then the final part of the major revision before the commission this evening is to revise a current condition number 69 regarding low-cost accommodations to really just defer to the coastal development permit, which again will be subject to coastal commission approval. The low-cost visitor accommodation requirements is more a function of the Coastal Act, and that is really dealt with through the CDP process by, by coastal commission. And I'll go into more detail on that in a future slide here. Just to remind the commission, I understand there's a lot of history with this project, and you know, it was denied previously by the commission, just that shows that there was a level of controversy around the approved project. However, it is an approved project now, really the, the scope of the major revision or the changes I just went over. It's not to, to revisit what was already approved. Another way to put it is if this major revision is denied, the applicant still has a project to proceed with if he wishes. And then again, the city's purview is the major revision to the conditional use permit, which is separate from the coastal development permit because the project's located in, on state Tylands, in an area that we call coastal original jurisdiction. The coastal development permit must be issued by the coastal commission. The city doesn't have that CDP authority for this site. Now, just to go into more detail on the major revision that's within the commission's purview this evening, on the left you can see the approved four plans for the APC building. The first floor showing a kitchen space, retail space that would become a tapas bar and marine-related retail area. Then on the second floor, you can see that 1,500 square foot restaurant. And then the major revision we're looking at this evening is essentially changing out that restaurant space for three new hotel rooms and an entry room. And then again, on the first floor, the applicant is requesting to remove one of the public restroom stalls and is specifying that that retail space on Embarcadero Road would be a tapas bar, so there would be that activity with a, a restaurant use there. So the change to use on the second story has the effect of changing the, the layout slightly of the observation deck in order to provide access to the hotel rooms. And this was a point of concern previously for planning commission on the approved project. Planning commission previously asked the applicant to step back that observation deck, so there's less of a tunneling effect, that was the term used last year on the project. The applicant did step it back. You can see in the image on the right, it still stepped back by not, but by not quite as much. It would protrude another about six and a half feet closer towards Embarcadero Road, again to provide that access to the, the hotel rooms. In staff's analysis of this, it still is setback sufficiently to avoid that, that tunneling effect, that will be, I'm sure, one of the items of discussion this evening. The next part is amending the condition number 69 regarding low-cost visitor-serving accommodations. I touched on this a little bit earlier. You can see on the screen here, if you're able to read it, the existing condition 69 language. It does mirror policies in our Plan Morro Bay that talk about a requirement for 25% of the rooms to be set aside at low-cost prices, which is defined as 75% of the statewide average daily rate. And staff is essentially amending the condition to be more general, to just open the door for the applicant to work with the coastal commission, to see if there could be an option to reduce that 25% requirement. I think I stated in the staff report that I've had conversations with coastal commission staff, and they've indicated that they definitely want to still see low-cost visitor-serving accommodations incorporated into the project. They wouldn't support waiving them altogether, but could be open to reducing the requirement from 25% to 20%, especially considering the amount of coastal, you know, public coastal access that would be provided by this project. If you look at the site now, there's very limited public coastal access to the bay through this project site. After the project is developed, it's going to provide the harbor walk connection, the observation deck, the pocket park. It would significantly improve coastal access and approval of this project, and allowing the applicant to request some adjustments to that condition could help accomplish that, that coastal access. I also wanted to relate, I'm sure the applicant will speak to this in more detail, the applicant's justification that he's provided to staff and coastal commission staff for why he believes the 25% low-cost requirement should be reduced for, for this project. It is important to point out that the city did a survey in 2017, and then we actually recently determined that we did a more recent study in 2022, and both of those studies showed that if you look citywide, the city of Morro Bay does have a higher percentage of low-cost rooms than a lot of other coastal jurisdictions, and in fact, citywide, more than 25% of the rooms already are priced at low-cost levels. And I would note too, that many of the more economy hotel rooms in the city of Morro Bay are very close and within walking distance to the Embarcadero and, and the bay. The applicants also pointed out that the low-cost rate of $148, that's a statewide average, not factoring into the significantly higher cost it is to be able to build and provide accommodations on Tylands, on the Embarcadero. And then also, as I mentioned previously, the project does provide significant coastal access and public access to, to the bay. Another thing that's worth pointing out, I think I added this in the staff report, is the, the public benefit of the low-cost requirement is a little questionable, considering it is, there's no way to verify income eligibility. So members of the public looking for accommodations in Morro Bay, if they're looking to stay on the waterfront on the Embarcadero, they will benefit from a low-cost room regardless of their, of their income. There's no verification, so it just, it reduces the rates, but there's no guarantee on, you know, what the income level those, those rooms would go to. And I think the final aspect of the project to discuss is a request for a parking waiver. This was somewhat of a last-minute change after we published the, the staff report. The applicant did put in a request for a, a parking waiver. So a project, any project on the Embarcadero is allowed to utilize parking credits when determining off-street parking requirements. The parking credits are determined based on the existing uses on the site. In this case, if you look at the existing uses on the site, the project is eligible for parking credits equivalent to 15 spaces, excuse me, parking credits equivalent to 14 spaces, and the proposed uses changing the restaurant to a hotel does increase the parking requirement for the project to 15 spaces, which would require one off-street parking space. Staff initially conditioned the project to provide, or paying in lieu fee for that one parking space. And one of the key reasons for that is, again, the project's providing a lot of coastal access and public benefit on the west side of the Embarcadero. Incorporating off-street parking space would not only interfere with pedestrian safety, but it also would take away from, you know, publicly accessible space along the Embarcadero and waterfront. So the applicant did identify a provision in our zoning code that does authorize a parking waiver for projects within 1,200 feet of a city-owned parking lot, and has put in a request for that waiver. It, it is subject to discretionary review, so it's not automatic guarantee that's within the commission's purview to either approve the parking waiver or to continue with the recommended condition for an in-lugue fee. And just to kind of show the justification for the parking waiver, this is an exhibit just measuring the distance from the office building at 495 Embarcadero to the beginning of the Tylands, Tylands Park public parking area. So staff is recommending the commission approve the requested parking waiver, and so we've provided a revised finding and proposal to delete condition number 12 to reflect support of a parking waiver. That staff recommends the planning commission approve this major revision to the conditional use permit, and we're available for questions.
Do you guys have questions of Airlin? Nope. Okay, so is the applicant, I'm presuming has a presentation for us? And again, these mics are new, so you kind of have to talk right at them.
Thank you, Airlin, and thank you, Planning Commission, for hearing me tonight. Airlin's done an excellent job of summarizing my project and the history, so I won't spend a lot of time over, going over all of those items. I've been at this since the RFP for 27 months now, and we've had a lot of time reviewing the project and fine-tuning both our, our design and our use for the public benefits. And in that process, after approval, we looked at the viability of adding another restaurant in that location, and that determined, we determined that it would be better use for the hotel rooms, converting that upstairs to hotel as opposed to another restaurant. So we'll have nine waterfront rooms and one room on the Embarcadero. So that will most likely be the most waterfront rooms on the Embarcadero right now. We've fine-tuned the retail space in the main building to accommodate, still maintain the kitchen, and probably do a takeout food capability, as well as having the tapas, the small tapas bar on the front. The food capability will also be able to address the needs of what we're calling Reggie's Place, which is that wine bar on the southern end of the property. One of the other features of our project that should be considered as a public benefit is that we're maintaining a commercial wharf to allow servicing vessels, the local harbor needs for marine construction in the area between the main building and the new hotel units. So we'll be able to use that as and when we need to service commercial vessels, and it's really the only load-bearing wharf that's operating in Morro Bay right now. The marina aspect of it will also be able to support a kayak or electric boat operation, which is similar to what other facilities have. And we've also included a, a larger dock to accommodate either whale watching or other recreational boat activities up to a 65-foot commercial vessel. And that could be, depending on the demand, be able to service marine operations as well. I think I'll pull up slide number one. I think you've covered everything else with, with your slides, but I want to make sure everybody knows what we have there now. Slide number one is the existing area view of the existing facility.
So the slides I have here are in a PDF, and I'm not sure if they're going to pull up in presentation mode. Here we go, all right.
All right, so that's basically what, what we have right now. I know everybody's seen it. We've been operating the marine operation. On the right side, the southern side, is the existing, what we're calling Reggie's Place, which was the short-term rental. Those will be eliminated, and we'll be clearing that lot entirely up to the edge of our building. Slide number two. This is what the proposed development will look like. It's pretty much to scale. As you can see, it's going to be a big improvement over what we have there now. One of the aspects of our design which allows the harbor walk to go from the Mariners Park to the north, wrap around the rooms, the buildings, and return on the southern end, where we're going to build a pocket park and have seating and other amenities there next to the Reggie's Building. next to the Reggie's Building. I don't think I'll show any of the other slides, because I think, Airlan, you've covered everything with the details. I guess I can open up to questions, if you have any.
Do you guys have any questions for Paul?
Actually, I do have one question. With respect to the viewing platform, I'm reading in the file that, despite the fact that it was extended a little bit further towards the water, I think it's like six or eight feet, this did not increase the tunneling effect. Can you explain why it doesn't?
We actually reduced it on the, on the street side. We reduced the viewing platform. I think on the water side, it was, it's still in the same place that our original, our original design was.
Oh, I guess.
Was that your question? I mean.
Forgive me, because I'm probably not clear. In looking at the plan, it looks like the platform is longer from the, from the Embarcadero side towards the water. Simply more platform.
Yeah, okay.
From my way of thinking, that increases.
From the original design, you mean?
Yes.
I think with this latest design, we're seven feet further, six or seven feet further towards the Embarcadero. The side on the water side hasn't changed, so we did extend it in order to get access to the building, to allow access to the building. So, we've increased the footprint of that observation deck by six or seven feet from the approved design.
The original that was, that we denied was all the way out at the sidewalk edge, almost.
Right.
A straight line.
That's where we pulled it back on that side.
They moved it in 20 feet, and now they're coming back, rather than moving it in 20, they're coming back to 13 feet off the sidewalk.
So, if I could describe the viewing platform as sort of a second, as a roof sort of structure, is it larger or smaller than when it first appeared before us?
It appears to me to be smaller.
That answers my question.
Yeah. It's smaller than the first design you saw.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I had a question for the downstairs restaurant area. Is there seating planned as part of that?
We're gonna have a few seats. It's gonna be more of a smaller serving area, and we're going to emphasize probably more takeout capability there. We see a higher demand for that in that area. Reggie's Place will have seating.
Thank you, Paul. Do we have, before we continue with questions from the public, I would like to disclose that I did have ex parte communications with the applicant's architect, Reggie, I'm sorry, Jean. And if you guys have had any ex parte communications, now's the time to note that I chatted with Jean this morning. But is there anyone from the public that would like to comment on the project?
Betty Winholz. I sent you an email, and I'm just gonna reemphasize some of the points I made there. And let me say that. No problem. Okay, so I think it is a better use to do hotel rooms than the restaurant, but in changing that use, the observation deck, I think, becomes obsolete. It's not relevant, because now you have public hotel rooms or bedrooms where people are standing right out in front of, right next to your window, where you're looking out of. And so, it doesn't seem to me that the use there matches, and that I would eliminate the observation deck, which gets rid of the tunneling effect that you've been talking about, because even though this is smaller than what it was, it's not as smaller as it was. Like Mr., like your chairman said, it used to be 20, then it backed off, and then it's come back out to 13. So, I think it's important to note that that tunnel effect is still there. I want to say that I object to the request for no parking. At the least, he should be doing the in-lu parking. What he really should be doing is finding that other parking place on his property. And to say that there would be a traffic concern, he'll be having trucks go in and out of there anyways, or for the businesses, so I'm not sure why a car parked there is more of a hazard than not. And all of his parking is already down in the tidlands parking lot, which I objected to earlier, but that's irrelevant to what you're looking at. So, what I'm just saying now is, at the least, you should do the in-lu parking and not get, let that off the hook. Regarding number 69, as was the condition that they want to eliminate, I believe it should be there. Like it was mentioned, it is in our general plan. You should just be consistent about that. You know, the Sharice Hansen project had to go by that, other people had to go by that. I don't see why this is an exception, because everyone is doing the harbor walk. And so, for me, the harbor walk is not a public benefit, it's a necessity. It's what's being required. It's not, it's not a special condition that he's offering, okay? Everyone's required to do that. So, I don't see how the harbor walk adds to or excuses low income, or other access, or other exceptions, or the parking that's being asked for. I strongly believe that the building that we're dealing with only tonight, that the exterior needs to be maintained as-is. That is, the windows need to stay where they are, the staircase, which we already know is going to stay there, that that's real important to the character of that building. Expectation, what else? I think I'm running out of time, so thank you very much.
Any other comments from the public? AGP, do we have any online? Oh, we do have.
My chairperson, Myers, we have no raised hands in the queue.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Doughty.
Good evening, Jean Doughty, architect. About the observation deck, we have an elevator on one side of the building here, and for us to exit or enter the 495, we need that walkway across there to get in for the second story. As far as the harbor walk itself, that's a requirement, but the observation deck on the south side definitely is a public benefit. Thank you.
Okay, seeing no more public, unless there's someone else, I'll close public comment and bring it back to the commission. Unless, staff, do you have any comments on? Joe, I think because you were here first, I would actually be, just briefly, there's a slight difference between things that I wanted to clarify. So, when this project first came before us, we denied it. But the project that came before us, we discussed at great length with the applicant, and when the applicant brought that back to council, it had taken into consideration many things that we had asked for. For instance, Reggie's Place was added between our denial and when it went to city council. And that, in my opinion, leads into some consideration, because Reggie's Place adds a parking requirement, and that was something that we, as a city planning commission, asked them to do, and that they did. And then we also asked them to draw back that deck, as they did originally, to 20 feet, and now to 13. Those are things that they responded to, and we also asked them to reduce the number of second-story rooms, which they did. So, there, those, that's a little clarification, unless, Airlan, if you want to.
Chair Myers, so, thank you, and I meant to emphasize more during my presentation the fact that the city council did approve a revised project. However, the sequencing was a little bit different, so the only change between what planning commission denied and city council approved, there was one change, and that was to eliminate one of the second-story hotel rooms. Now, the applicant did propose Reggie's Place at the last planning commission meeting.
There were three meetings, I forgot.
Based on previous planning commission comment, but the one change was removal of that second-story hotel room.
Thank you. Okay, Joe.
That's interesting. Well, my preliminary comment is that I have a difficult time appreciating the way the appeal process played out, because my recollection is that in a vote of four to five, we denied the application because of insufficient community benefits. And I seem to recall that the application that came before us when I was here contemplated demolishing each of the cabins, and my thought is that the project that we rejected then incorporated numerous and substantial changes, so that it became a project that we, as a formal body, had never really evaluated, because we had made suggestions, but it wasn't, that was not a project before us. That's a curious way to construct an appeal. And so, what in effect was a new project, which we had not decided upon, went to the city council as an appeal, and they approved it, essentially circumventing any need to return back to the planning commission with these new details, which is what I would have really liked to have seen, and frankly, what I expected to be seen. I was very much surprised that we could, in fact, call that project an appeal when it so did not resemble what had come before us. But I remember talking to the city attorney, and that was certainly a legal approach, so I guess I can't argue with that, but I'm just commenting on my dissatisfaction with the way that went. I would think that when an applicant makes significant changes to a project that has initially been rejected by the planning commission, they should return to the planning commission with new changes before being able to make an appeal, but that's my opinion. But with respect to the application that comes before us now, with respect to the observation deck, I understand that there's a reduced tunneling effect, but I'm really skeptical, skeptical of the use that the public will make of this viewing deck, again, because there's a sense of intruding on the privacy of the people who have taken the hotel room accommodations. The fact that there's a sign out there notwithstanding that it's public space, I think there will be a genuine and substantial reluctance to use that, which undercuts its classification as a community benefit. But more importantly, and I remember explicitly stating this at that meeting, I don't consider, in this particular case, the viewing station as a benefit. I regard it as an effort to obscure what would otherwise be an unobscured view of the bay and the water beyond. With respect to the affordable accommodations, you know, it strikes me that this particular law in effect in Morro Bay is in part responsible for us having some low-cost accommodations. I also think, as was mentioned earlier, that lots of hotel operators have had to comply with that, and it strikes me as unfair, perhaps even an injustice, to give preferential treatment this time to someone when the others could not get it. And the notion that, that there isn't any, there's no need to present evidence of low income in order to qualify for one of these accommodations might be a rationale to repeal that particular affordable housing law, but it's not really a rationale to give preferential treatment to somebody who doesn't want it. The problem may be with the substance of the law, but not in making all the innkeepers in the area deserve it. With respect to the parking, you know, 14 spaces, you know, is a considerable burden on the public parking. Perhaps one more isn't a significant burden, but I do think at the very least, there should be some sort of in-lu compensation made for that additional parking space. Oh, let's see if I'm forgetting anything. No, I think, I think, I think those are my comments. Okay? Mary?
Sure, I can go. So, some of the first principles, thinking that I just was trying to keep in mind when evaluating the project, was first that we shouldn't feel pressured to approve something solely based on a historic timeline. We should stay focused on the scope of the changes. Additionally, we should not approve something based on the current use compared to the future use. I see that this project is essentially a one-way door, because once we approve this and the construction is complete, we will likely live in this state on the waterfront for many years. Also top of mind for me were some of the recent cross-cutting themes that came out as part of the waterfront master plan update, such as the parking challenges and how we balance the competing priorities of tourism benefits versus resident quality of life. In regards to that, the, I think the revision potentially reduces public-serving amenities, such as degrading coastal access and view corridors. I see a real concern that public visitors feel unwelcome or intrusive in using the observation deck. Also, in my research, I read the Coastal Act requires maximization of public access and seeing coastal views, and any design that causes the public to hesitate or feel constrained in accessing the promised observation area is contrary to those mandates. I have a hard time picturing that local residents would climb up those stairs to look out at the water with the current proposal. Additionally, the elimination of a second-floor bayfront restaurant is something that causes a lot of concern to me. I think that's something that we don't have enough of here, and local families, I know, are constantly looking for a place to go spend time with waterfront views. I know we have Morro Grill and Windows, but another one would definitely be appreciated. So, I see that turning into hotel rooms as dramatically shrinking the public access and benefit of the site. Additionally, I feel that we should, you know, continue to treat the height restriction as an exception, and so, to me, the calculus has changed on the public benefit with this proposal, and so, it's something that should be revisited. I also just wanted to note two concerns for us to consider. One is essentially the privatization of public parking in Morro Bay, which is a limited resource. For example, when you go to Dorrance on a Sunday morning now, lots of city parking is given to hotels, and it can be hard to find a parking spot that doesn't have a hotel sign in front of it. Additionally, with the privatization or discussion of pocket parks, I hear from a lot of local families that we don't need new parks, we just need our current parks to be usable for families and clean without, you know, needles and homeless in them. And I also would like to make sure that we're considering the maintenance of the pocket parks, because on the waterfront tour for the waterfront master plan, I believe that we did hear that, you know, sometimes with the current pocket park, the amount of toilet paper and the water bill that the leaseholders are subsidizing because they now have a park right next, or as part of their lease, is resulting in things like choices to potentially lock the bathrooms to access. So, I think if we're going to have pocket parks as a strategy for our waterfront, we need to be discussing what's the maintenance and what are the requirements for cleanliness and bathroom access and things like that.
I agree with what Betty said earlier about having those rooms added up there as private rooms for rent. I know if I were paying a lot of money to stay up there, I wouldn't want to hear people from the public coming around where I'm trying to be in a private setting. And I also agree with what Joe said earlier about the in-lu fee for the required parking.
I, one more thought occurred to me.
I, one more thought occurred to me. In this, again, this with respect to future appeals to the city council, or perhaps, I don't know what the vote is, the appeal for this project as well. I seem to recall that there was a suggestion in the appeal before the city council that the project in front of the city council had essentially remedied all or the major criticisms that the planning commission had when it appeared before the planning commission, and there was really no one at that time to differ from that statement. So I'd like to suggest that on those rare occasions when there is an appeal before of our decision to the city council, that one of us pointed to go and essentially represent the planning commission in that decision-making, so that, so that the points of the planning commission can be presented by indeed someone on the planning commission. Carolyn?
Mr. Chair, this might be a good time to speak to some logistics. So since we have a two-two commission, if there is a split, if it looks like you're headed towards a split two-two decision, the commission should continue to deliberate to see if you can persuade a third commissioner to one side or the other. If that is not possible, and it ends up at a two-two, that would constitute a denial, which would be appealable to the city council. What I would recommend and what the normal practice is to avoid the concern that Commissioner and Graffia referred to with the record not being clear enough as to the commission's concerns for the denial, we would, if it's looking like the commission is heading towards a denial of this major revision, we would want to hear as many of your specific findings and reasons for supporting that denial as possible, and Susannah and I will take notes on that. We'll ask for recess. We will draft up what we hear in a revised resolution, a revised findings, and then bring that up on the screen to make sure the majority of the commission agrees with the sentiment in those findings.
Okay, thank you. I guess I'll give my thoughts on this. When it first came before us, we had a lot of comments from the public with respect to the way things look now. The little houses were there, everybody liked the little houses, they didn't really like the three units on top with multiple units below, they wanted to see less units on top. And that was also, that was not just the public, that was prior commissioners, well, myself. And I brought up the idea that I didn't like to see hotel rooms as being the introduction to the Morro Bay and Barcadero from, coming from the south, then there should be some sort of more active pedestrian happening down there, not deciding what that was. It could be a bar, it could be a retail, it could be a restaurant, whatever. That's not, the point is just interactive activity for the pedestrians there. And we discussed the original design of the, oh, the wharf, they had this, it's like a fake wharf facing the sidewalk is the pilings with essentially the deck of the upstairs, the walkway. It was, it was parallel with the sidewalk originally, and they, and we requested that they bring it back, like we've been discussing earlier. We also discussed the public deck before and what a public benefit is. We discussed the widths of the harbor walk, we discussed the marina, and most of the things I think that we had brought up were what was presented to the city council and later approved in the appeal by the city council. And as I mentioned earlier, in my opinion, the request that we had to add the little active sidewalk improvement at the south end is what is now the extra parking space requirement. And if they pulled that back off and went back to their original plan, not that they're doing that, but I mean, I think it's, in my opinion, that they have given something to the public that's a little bit more interesting, that facility down there, to my eye, is better than just another hotel room. If you go across the street, there's a big hotel, and that hotel is multiple stories, multiple stories tall, right there at the edge of the, of the little parking lot, and that hotel across the street is a significant structure, you know, block, you don't, all you're seeing from the south end as you come north is a big blank wall, there's no interest. And so that side of the street is dead. These guys are really enlivening, in my opinion. And I was against this project when it first came. I was fighting against it, and I've, I think they've accommodated all the things that I was requesting, and to bicker over whether we should have one parking space on site or the in-lie fee versus Reggie's Place, well, in my case, I would say that Reggie's Place outweighs the trauma of the extra parking space. I'll defer, I don't really have a strong opinion one way or the other on whether we go with the 69, is it 69? Resolution?
The low-cost condition 69, yes.
Yeah. Whether we go with the, allowing it go to the Coastal Commission or stick with the city's general plan, I would tend to want to stick with the cities, I suppose, but I'm not opposed to going the other way either.
Mr.?
Those are my, those are my comments, I think.
Mr. Chair, if it's, okay, I just would like to make a couple of comments. First, to make sure it's clear, consistency and fairness is really important to me, and I do understand the comments we've heard and the perception that opening the door on the low-cost condition is being inconsistent or somehow unfair to other projects. So I hear that and I understand it, and I just want to make sure that the commission and public understands that the Coastal Commission is the ultimate decider on the low-cost requirement. That's their purview under the CDP, so it's just opening the door for the Coastal Commission to decide how they will. The Coastal Commission still could approve the project with less than 25% low cost. That CDP condition would supersede the CUP condition, and that's what would be in effect. On a procedural note, let's see where this may be headed. As an example, Susannah and I every day see projects come to our desk that have challenges, and we very rarely tell an applicant, nope, doesn't work, sorry, goodbye. Our job every day is to, you know, within the code, 100%, our job is to make sure or to see how we can make a project work. And so I just wanted to share that with you, and that could maybe help with your deliberation to see if there are specific changes you could suggest, or added conditions, or anything you might suggest that could address your concerns, and you may also ask the applicant or the applicant's architect, Mr. Dowdy, to see if they have any comments on how they might propose to address some of the concerns they've heard from the commission.
Anyone want to start? I can start if you...
I could give a short, like, my decision calculus is like, there was a previous decision made that the public benefit here was worth it in order to, you know, have the design approved that included things like the height exception. To me, when I'm looking at the revised proposal, the public benefit is a wine bar, of which we have several, and families generally aren't able to use, and a takeout window, because I, I think that there's some light consensus, maybe not consensus is too strong, that the public observation deck won't be used and might be uncomfortable to both the visitors and the residents to use. So when I look at the wine bar and a takeout window, I personally don't see enough public benefit to approve a height exception for this revised design.
Hmm, that's, that's interesting, because I'm, well, my first remark is, I certainly do recognize the substantial modifications that were made in the, to the original product, project in the interest of community benefit, particularly removing, you know, one of the upstairs units so that there was more view shed. With the application that comes before us, as I said, I, I think the additional ask in terms of parking is not much of an ask, and it might even be insignificant, and so I'm satisfied with that in-lie fee. But I continue to believe that the, that the viewing deck is not what I regard as a significant community benefit, and rather should not be part of the plan. And again, as I said, with respect to the low-cost housing, I, I'm actually grateful to hear that the California Coastal Commission might get us out of this dilemma, but I would, I'm hard-pressed to justify that special preference in my own mind, so that's, that's a difficult thing to get past. And so I, I would, I would not approve this revised plan for those two reasons, both the viewing deck and the low-cost housing. And I don't think those are significant issues either, insignificant issues, rather. Further comment, Tony? I think there's somewhat of a consensus on that view deck not being a public benefit, somewhat, it seems like to me. And removing it, they are still going to have to have a gangplank of sorts getting from the elevator tower to the upstairs of the story building. And so there would still be some view corridor, but it would be somewhat diminished, what's the right word, improved by the removal of that deck, but essentially in some people's minds, removing that deck is perhaps removing a public benefit. In other people's minds, it's creating less shadow and a more open feeling down there. Woods of, I'm just kind of tossing that out there. Is that, is that deck, could I, can I ask the applicant to come back up on this? Is that deck, if this, if this project were to go forward and with us saying that deck is reduced in size or something like that, and no longer necessary as a public benefit, does that hurt your project, ruin it? Does it, is there, is that a question you can answer?
I can answer that. If it means approving this project and removing that deck, I'll do that as long as we still have our access to the, to the other building from the elevator.
Thank you. I'll reclose, unless, I'll reclose public comment now. Does that change anything in your guys' opinion to reduce, I mean, I know that was a big consideration for you, Joe.
Well, I'm going to have to defer to people who have greater expertise. To me, obviously, there has to be some way for patrons to get to the second floor, but I'm...
There would still be a gangplank across.
But I, but I would hope that whatever is necessary to get people to the second-floor accommodations would be very significantly and very materially less than the current second-floor viewing stand. I don't know what, what that would mean in specifics, but I would expect a significant reduction.
There's an ADA standard, I'm sure, for widths on walkways on second stories, and that standard would apply, in my opinion, and that's something that planning could use to move forward.
May I clarify, so is the concern with the second-story observation deck that it would be given a private fill since it would have adjacent hotel rooms instead of a restaurant? Is that the concern, or is the concern the tunneling effect? Just if you can clarify.
Since I was the first to bring it up, my concerns are, one, the tunneling effect, two, the structure itself obscures what otherwise be the unobstructed view of water and beyond, and, third, that it won't be used as much as the applicant would like us to believe it would be used because of the reservations that the public would have in terms of intruding. So really, it's all three of those explanations support why I'm not in favor of the viewing stand.
Thank you.
And what, does that, it all, this is not, this is, this is one of those things where you have five or six different ways the scales fall, and we have to try to find a way to make it work. And so I guess I'm trying to see what kinds of conditions or what kind of changes, is that change that potentially could be made? Does that ameliorate any of your percentage of your concerns, or does that help you come to a positive vote instead of a negative vote on where we are? What would be the other things that we would have to do to get a positive vote on the project?
Yeah, so I'm not super concerned about the parking as far as it's one parking space. For me, the biggest thing is setting a precedent. Certain people are held to certain standards on their projects, and I think that that, and I think that needs to be consistent. And if those rooms get changed, or the restaurant gets changed to rooms, I'm not necessarily opposed to that, but then I, excuse me, I think that the deck becomes obsolete. I mean, who's really going to want to go up there?
And feeling about the Coastal Commission purview over affordability versus...
I think that's a good point, as far as how do you, how do you regulate that, and who's checking that, and who's, I mean, in theory, I like it, it makes sense, but, you know, are the cheaper hotel rooms on a first-come, first-served basis, or do you call in and you state that you make a certain amount of money and then they give you the reservation? So it's kind of, to me, if you put rules in place that you cannot regulate and you cannot confirm that people are in fact telling the truth and they are low-income, then I think it's got good intentions, but it just doesn't, I don't know why we'd have something in place if it doesn't actually get enforced.
Yeah, so, Mr. Chair, if I can maybe address that, that comment. So Coastal Commission is in charge with enforcing that, is charged with enforcing that requirement. My understanding is it historically hasn't been enforced very well, but Coastal Commission is going to begin enforcing low-cost requirements across the state. I also want to make sure the commission understands that this proposal isn't all or nothing, so one option could be to approve the major revision, but not approve the change to condition number 69. That could be an option. Also, at the, you know, Chair's prerogative, Mr. Gillen asked if he could also provide some additional detail on that request regarding low cost.
Please.
I've had some discussions with the Coastal Commission, I've also discussed it with Airline and the other stakeholders on the Embarcadero, and what I'm going to propose to the Coastal Commission is that they consider the higher cost of development of the waterfront properties and the limited number of waterfront properties, and change the formula to be more in line with the average cost of the hotel rooms on the waterfront. And their formula right now states that the low-cost accommodation should not be any more than 70% of the average high-season rate, and they're applying it to Morro Bay's total average cost, which is, is out of line with what our development costs are on the Embarcadero. So what I'm going to propose, and they sound positive on this, and this will help all the stakeholders on the Embarcadero, is that we propose to look at the average cost, high-season cost of a waterfront room, or west of the Embarcadero room, and apply the 70% formula to that, and that becomes the highest low-cost room that's available. And right now, they've stated it at $148 a night, which is, is not feasible for a hotel room on the Embarcadero. And I want to propose this so that everybody on the Embarcadero that has to comply with this regulation can adjust their own formulas accordingly. So I think it makes sense, and I've had positive feedback on that. So that's what I'm proposing on that, is to allow the Coastal Commission to review that formula. They've done it in other cities, they've agreed to it in other cities, different formulas for different locations, so there's no reason why they shouldn't consider ours.
So, Mr. Chair, if I could add, hearing this is kind of a pain point for the commission, my suggestion would be for this major revision, let's, let's take that off the table. It sounds like Mr. Gillen can accomplish what he's asking with Coastal regardless of the language of the condition, so I would just take that out of the request for purposes of continued deliberation.
In my other conversations on the waterfront, I chatted with the old owner of the galley about the south part of the waterfront as a, as a restaurant space, and having lived here most of my life, the restaurants on the south end don't typically work. I mean, it's just the nature of Morro Bay and Barcadero, they don't, unless... it's just the nature of Morro Bay and Embarcadero, they, they don't, unless, the Hofbroe in the old days used to be down at the south end when this building that was designed down there was brand-new, and it was cool, and it was fresh. But over time, the, each of those spaces on either side of the street for restaurants, you know, Beach Burger's gone, all the, all the restaurants down there die. And so I have a lot of empathy for our developer. We can't just force someone to build a restaurant. Because, you know, we can, we can ask them to build a space, and that space should be whatever it needs to be to be successful. And in my opinion, to deny the project because we want a restaurant and they want a hotel room is, is, it sounds great on paper, but the reality is, we have an Embarcadero, and we have to have, be as successful as it can be. And restaurants with the cost associated with this building down there, and their lease rates, and the fact that we, as a community, own them, and we lease the space to one guy, and he leases it to an operator, it just makes for an awkward situation with, with values down there. And I empathize with that as someone who's built in the past. Building is very, very expensive anywhere right now, so building down there is excruciating. So if I were to make a, a motion at this point, and you guys are the ones that's supposed to be making motions, but if I were to make one, it would be, based on what I'm hearing, is letting, letting, letting go of the, the 25% versus 20% coastal, the thing that Airland's already let go of, and letting go of needing to build that second-story deck, and just, you know, saying that, that causeway, or whatever you want to call it, from the elevator shaft over to the upstairs should be to accommodate two-way travel of two wheelchairs passing, you know, which is, I don't know what that width is, but you guys can ascertain that with building department. And it would be to keep, it sounds like you guys want, I would be advocating to not have the in-lu fee, but if that's, if that's, if there's no way to make this thing pass, I will ask for the in-lu fee. What did I miss?
I would just say that, at least for me, my decision calculus doesn't, isn't about trying to compel a restaurant specifically, although I do think with the distillery in Locatrina, there is a revitalization and more energy down on that side. To me, it's not about specifically requiring a restaurant. It's about, there was a certain list of public benefits that were present when the decision was made to build to that height, and now a lot of those have been taken off the list. And so, to me, it's the question of what is going to be, like, do we still feel that the scale, you know, there's still enough public benefit being added that we should give an exception to the, the height? Or do we feel that there are other things that should be added on to have it make sense for, to build to that height? It's not specifically, in my mind, about the restaurant. It's just that without the restaurant, you know, that takes away public benefit. The corridor moving, you know, that's just a tiny bing ding in terms of the design and view corridors. And then without that kind of public, open to the public space, the observation deck isn't really a public benefit as well. So those are the three, and then I'm happy to put, you know, parking to the side, or the disadvantaged community thing to the side. But to me, it's those three, there's three negatives in the column of public benefit, and do the positives still outweigh the height restriction, the height exception?
Just real quick, Commissioner Bukowski, so I'm, I'm, I'm following you as far as the reduction in public benefit that would have been the basis for a height exception on the original CUP. We do have to be careful when we discuss this major revision because the Commission is not being asked to make a height exception now. So I think, a bit of a nuance, we have to be careful how that, how that's worded and potentially translated into findings for this major revision.
Okay, so I'd say, though, approving the revised design takes away public benefit, so does the project still make sense to pursue with the revised design? Is that...
Yeah, so again, what I'm hearing is that the major revision would eliminate public benefit that was a, a basis for the approval of the original CUP.
Which public benefits being removed?
I would say the public space on the second story, as well as the observation deck being accessible comfortably, like a place that you would be driven to go visit, as well as the offset changing, which changes the view corridor. Those are the three things I'm tracking.
I know if I'm starting to get confused, probably other people are getting confused too. I want to, I want to reiterate, at the original meeting, I think a majority of the, of the Commission went over, I certainly was, by the fact that the number of second-story units was reduced, and Reggie's apartment was going to be in some way preserved by it being duplicated. And, and we found that as very substantial community benefit for the project, which thankfully was incorporated into this new appearance of, of the project. So I wanted, I wanted to make that clear. Now, now we're examining a new set of community benefits for the latest changes, but we on, or at least some of us on the Planning Commission are advocating that viewing deck on the second floor be eliminated. So you can't really say that that elimination is somehow a reduction in community benefits, because clearly the applicant wants to do it, and we're suggesting that he not do it. But, and, but in clarification, with respect to the low-cost accommodation provision, if we just, what was the word you said, just put it aside?
We'll keep the current condition as is.
Meaning that it would ultimately fall to the division, the decision of the Coastal Commission?
It is regardless. It's ultimately the Coastal Commission's authority.
I just want, I wanted to understand what you meant by, by...
If I may just briefly, kind of to frame the public benefit discussion around the second-story deck, I think really what it comes down to, and what I'm hearing, is that removing the restaurant and replacing it with hotel rooms will give a private feel to that space, so the public won't feel comfortable there, so it's no longer a public benefit. I did add in the conditions that a requirement for the project to use opaque glass to address privacy concerns and possibly allow the public to feel more comfortable there. It sounds like that wouldn't be enough to address Commission concerns, but it does, I think, lead to the question, are there other design considerations or, or screening that you feel would preserve the public benefit of that second-story observation deck?
None come to my mind. I think it's by definition something that would not be attractive to the public at large.
Yeah, I would kind of, to be honest, comes, my, my feeling is that the building will look better with, with, for the public and for the, the public at large, from viewing corridors, et cetera, to have less of that deck up there, and would allow for the downstairs area to be sunnier. I, I have, I actually think it would improve the project in some ways to reduce that deck down to just a corridor of some sort to get across for, for ADA. I think we're really close to something here.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it seems, we've seen, well, I think we're in agreement that, you know, one more in-lu parking space might be appropriate, and drastically reducing the second-story viewing platform, and really not saying anything about public accommodations and allowing the California Coastal Commission to decide the issue, might be the best thing. You know, and it also strikes me that the whole issue of this low-cost accommodations is really, you know, sort of beyond our purview. I mean, if you, if you, if we eliminate, if we were to eliminate it, I mean, we would essentially be saying, yes, people of low income are encouraged to come to Morro Bay, but, but they can't, you know, find an accommodation on the Embarcadero because that will always be too expensive. And, and that may be the case, but I'd rather not be part of making that decision.
Want to make a stab at?
Oh, gosh, help me out here. Well, I, I think you, I think I've articulated the three things that we would want to have happen.
Yeah, so I'll just repeat to make sure I understand. So I'm hearing, keep the condition that requires the $15,000 parking in-lu fee.
I would, I would just, my first inclination is because of us being the ones that asked for that extra retail space at the south end, in my opinion, a subjective opinion, that that extra space that he's now having to pay for is essentially because we asked for something months back. And so that's, I'm, I'll stop there. I've said it twice.
Yes, you're right, but, but the reason, in a sense, we were obligated to ask for it as well, because we felt that demolishing Reggie's apartment never to be seen again, and allowing additional second-story accommodations was inappropriate. So, yes, we've required the need for the parking space, but in good faith, because we were trying to get sufficient additional community benefits, we really didn't have any other choice. So...
Okay, I understand.
We were compelled as well.
That's one. Two is keep condition 69 as currently worded regarding low-cost visitor-serving accommodations. And then, three is revising the project to replace the second-story observation deck with the, the minimum area or structure needed to provide accessibility from the elevator to the hotel rooms.
I would say two-way ADA accessibility.
Okay.
Two wheelchairs could pass.
But again, only as necessary. It should not accommodate, you know, should not be able to accommodate stools and little cocktail tables or anything like that. It should only be what's required by the necessity of transportation.
Anything else you guys, we've been sort of over here discussing, any further discussion?
Yeah, my big, my biggest thing is if we're putting rooms up there, eliminating that deck and making it minimal, because I agree, it will open the space up down below. It'll let sunlight into the plaza. It will eliminate the feeling of the massing with that big deck structure overhead. Most people don't like spending time in the shade unless it's really dark or really hot out, so...
Good with that then for, do we have a motion then, essentially as stated?
Well, I, yeah, I would, I would move to incorporate the provisions that Arliss has mentioned as stated as our...
And do we have a second? Go ahead if you are. Let's get a second before we discuss. Do we have a second?
Actually, I have one more question.
Okay.
When other projects have been developed recently, and the, the affordability was in effect and discussed, did, when it went to Coastal Commission, was there any change from what the city had approved to what the Coastal Commission allowed?
So from our review of the CDP conditions from Coastal Commission on similar projects on the Embarcadero, the Harbor Walk Plaza project did have some discussion and potentially... Go ahead, I'll let Susannah speak, make sure I don't misspeak.
From my memory and understanding of the Harbor Walk Plaza coastal development permit approved by Coastal Commission, Coastal Commission revised the threshold for that project's lower cost amount. So that project is able to charge a higher low-cost amount rather than the $148 set by the typical threshold.
So would it be fair to assume that they're gonna treat this project the same way?
Yes.
Since it's down the street?
Yes, and through our discussions with Coastal Commission, they have altered this in other jurisdictions as well.
So we're still, I'm wondering if we have a second on the motion?
I already brought the motion.
I know, I'm just, I know, I'm just, I'm, yeah, I guess I gotta keep staring at you guys, and you need to, and if we, and if we don't, then we need some sort of other motion.
I will second the motion.
Okay, then we need to vote. Unless there's discussion on it. I think there's any discussion. Airlin, do you have a question?
So...
Want to rephrase, you want to restate the motion?
I, I was conferring with the applicant when the, the motion was made. I just want to confirm. So it's pretty, pretty clear to keep condition 69 as currently written, keep the in-lu fee requirement. And I just want to confirm that the, the second-story deck would be for minimum access for two-way ADA accessibility. Just as a, kind of matter of process, it's important for the Commission to know that even an approval can be still appealed to the City Council to change conditions that the Planning Commission added. Also, since the, the motion would affect the design of the project, it'd probably be prudent to let the applicant speak briefly, just to make sure it doesn't cause a critical flaw to the project.
Are we commenting on the, am I commenting on the walkway, the modification to the observation deck?
Is that, yes.
Oh, yeah. It can be modified to accommodate whatever the ADA requirements are. I think it's eight to 10 feet, speaking with the architect. So structurally, I think it's doable.
Just to make sure the applicant is aware that the, it sounds like the Commission, the motion is to minimize the deck to the, the minimum accessibility.
I'll call it two-way, though, I think. That, that's, okay.
Yeah, I understand that. Also, some clarification on that, the Coastal Commission, is it being left to the Coastal Commission to establish the, the low-cost rule? Okay.
And then there was one other point I wanted, I wanted to make. Oh, so speaking of Coastal Commission, so, just so it's kind of clear and on the record, that Coastal Commission very well may still view the second-story observation deck as important coastal access and, and public benefit, and they may request to see that added back in to the project, in which case we would have to come back to the Planning Commission and ask for a revision to be consistent with the Coastal Commission's approval.
Any thoughts there? I'll start with Mary.
I mean, it is kind of strange that we review that, and then ultimately, at the end of the day, the Coastal Commission can decide whatever they want. So to me, it just seems like a process that we're going through to comply with language and...
Is it, would it also, am I right in assuming that the Coastal Commission would be privy to our rationale for why we want it, meaning reducing the tunneling and the embarrassment of the public and the obscure, those, all those arguments that we have for not wishing to see the viewing stand would be made apparent to the Coastal Commission?
Yes, we would, we would convey those to Coastal Commission staffs. They'd be aware of that.
Yeah, I mean, it is essentially to get the sun downstairs of the downstairs deck, the wharf that everybody's already on, walking around without, without having to elevate. More amenable, much more friendly. Okay. Think we're clear?
Yeah.
Okay. I think we need a, a vote.
Vice Chair Ngrafia?
Yes, I approve.
Commissioner DeFazio?
Yes.
Commissioner Bukowski?
No.
And Chair Meyer?
Yes. Thank you. It is appealable if you need to, for, for whatever reason, as per the rules. So I think that settles that public hearing item. Do we need to make any specific comments about the numbers associated? You're good, you're good to go.
About what numbers?
You, never mind. It's already taken care of it. Never mind. You don't need us to include the resolution numbers and da, 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 da. You have all that. Do we need to make, make that part of the record? The approval?
I think that was all clear in the motion.
Okay. Then we have any business items? I don't think there's any business items. Future agenda items? Airlin, you had two, or any of you want to question of public benefits? I'll throw in, because we keep talking... I'll throw in, because we keep talking about public benefits, and we need to have that a little bit more objective. We've been trying to get that more objective and less subjective for a long time.
But I've discussed this a little bit in the past, but as a reminder, the community benefit discussion was tied to the plan development overlay, which has gone away, and now really the community benefit discussion is just focused on the waterfront area. And so our WOMPAC will be evaluating that, and ultimately, the Planning Commission will as well, when you review the waterfront master plan.
And then do you have any comments of your own?
I do have a list of comments, since it's been a while since the last Planning Commission meeting. First of all, I want to call to your attention and the attention of the public that we have added. Our list of current planning and building permit projects to the agenda with a hyperlink under Community Development Director Updates, I'm not going to pull it up right now, but we did change the format to be a lot more user-friendly. So for a while, we attempted to create an automated report with our permit tracking system, City Works. It turns out, the report that that generated wasn't very user-friendly, so we're going back to the old-fashioned Microsoft Excel table, which is a much, I think, cleaner and user-friendly way to convey that information, and it's all up to date if the public or Commission wants to click on that link and review those reports. The next item I had was waterfront master plan update, but Commissioner Wachowski did an incredible job with that update. So thank you so much, Commissioner Wachowski, for that update. I really have nothing to add, that was all accurate and very well-stated. I do want to let the Commission know a couple of things that our department is currently working on, that won't necessarily come to the Commission, but we are working on updating our master fee schedule. So the City Council reviewed a comprehensive fee study update on August 12th, and the vast majority of the comments were related to planning and building fees. So I've been working with our Finance Director and City Manager to synthesize the comments that we heard, and develop some revised recommendations that we're going to present to City Council next Tuesday. Similarly, we're also, we've hired a consultant to do a Nexus study for development impact fees. I'm currently holding stakeholder meetings with building industry professionals to give them a presentation on the results of the development impact fee study, and to get their feedback, and we plan to present those fees to City Council on October 14th. And that concludes my updates this evening.
I did notice, I, may I?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
You know, I'm, this is unrelated to anything we've spoken about so far, but I have noticed that the gates at the Giovanni establishment that effectively end or block off the boardwalk have been closed for a very long time. And I wonder why, and if they might be unlocked so that people can, you know, make the walk all the way to the end of the Embarcadero.
I'll take a shot at it, but also Harbor Director Chris Munson is here. So there were safety concerns with some sinking asphalt due to the revetment, and it was closed due to public safety concerns. It has been closed for quite some time. I don't know if Mr. Munson wants to add anything to that.
Sorry, which area are we speaking about specifically?
Well, there's the parking lot to Giovanni's, and then beyond the parking lot where the fish processing equipment is, and I guess it's a fueling station, and just beyond that are these double gates, and then beyond that begins the, you know, the rest of the, whatever you call that, the boardwalk.
Yeah, so right now, there's some subsidence there, and so it's been closed down due to safety concerns, and they're actively looking at ways of restoring that and restoring the public access. But it's going to be an expensive fix, and so they're looking for funding options at this time.
Thank you.
Any, Airline, any, with respect to upcoming meetings, anything there to discuss?
So we do have a few projects that'll be ready for Planning Commission by the end of the year, but nothing's been scheduled at this time. So I heard a question from the audience, I'm not familiar with the current situation on South Bay.
I don't know what you're referring to, so we.
But Ms. Toner reminded me that we do have a project scheduled for, let's say, October 8th?
Seven.
October 7th. We do have a project scheduled for October 7th, so plan to have a meeting held that day.
Okay. I think that concludes tonight's meeting, and we are thus adjourned. Thank you all for coming.